...understand the issue more. And we were really very, I would say, best way to describe it, very frustrated with the conversation that we had, trying to resolve an issue, trying to find clarity. What was happening in the state of Missouri, and I believe the department is here, they can, they would probably be able to answer in more detail questions on the history of this. But at one point, if you can look at a statute that House Bill 1179 is trying to change, in that, in that section, we have the entertainment tax. And the entertainment tax is 4%, but it's based on what I believe is clearly identifying sales of tickets for admission into entertainment venues. And what's happening, been happening recently is that that definition has been expanded to include gym memberships and, and memberships for youth who are in gymnastics, or if you're taking tennis lessons, and the list goes on and on. And so, we're, we're actually, this year I'm hearing of even more different, unique and creative ways that this tax is being expanded, and the scope of the tax is being expanded. I, I see it as a tax increase without any actions taken by the legislature or by the voter. And so, I'm trying to clearly define what I believe the original intent of the entertainment tax was, and so that's, that's the intent of this bill. And to further provide testimony, I brought a video from my district that I'm gonna get ready for the committee.
Don't move. That's what I was.
Yeah, turn on the lights.
Yep, turn my stuff.
This is us in Idaho Falls.
The popcorn.
This has everything to do with how good our Wi-Fi is.
Our scene is important.
It's not as really temple as we, you know, we just lost your fortune.
They say you should not have to pay a state entertainment tax if fitness-related businesses like gyms and yoga studios. Okay, this is Paris, Toronto, this is live in our studio. Two, three, four.
Joe, in the last few years, we've seen a host of new taxes on things considered unhealthy, like tanning, soft drinks, and cigarettes. And not everyone agrees with those. So, a tax on healthy stuff has proven even less popular. Right on edge, challenging, stretched out, exhausting, even uncomfortable at times. Pilates is all of these things, but it is not entertaining. Every single person in the room is here, came here for a specific health reason. A hip replacement, a knee replacement, a lower back problem, there's, there's not one person in the room who came here for entertainment. No, do my right. That show is about as entertaining as it gets in Shelley Hampton Studios. It's a thing that people choose for health. They choose it to feel better, they choose it to correct their weight problems, they choose it to, to correct their joint problems. Shelley chose to start teaching it in the Ozarks more than 20 years ago, and chose to charge the same price ever since. The hand is gonna come off the wall maybe, until the State Department of Revenue told her she was supposed to charge an entertainment tax. When charged to each customer individually, the tax is a heavy, unbearable look. The problem is, fitness centers that didn't know about it and haven't been charging it, suddenly owe the IRS thousands of dollars in back taxes. Now, the weight of the tax is unbearable, so unbearable, a personal trainer at Springfield took the issue to state lawmakers. In essence, we are taxing people for lean health. Representative, he first tried to get the entertainment tax clarified to exclude fitness-related businesses last year, and he's giving it another go in January. It's very clear to anyone who raises a statute that it's intended for purchasing tickets for attending a game, not for breaking a sweat. Given two more. Shelley says her class is taxi, it is work, but it shouldn't be taxed. I felt like it was punishment, I felt like we were punishing the citizens of our country for doing healthy things. Shelley Hampton is actually the person who first brought this issue to us back in 2010, and we first interviewed her then. But Representative Burleson tells us the tax has been around much longer. Most businesses just don't find out about it until they're audited. Joe?
All right, thanks, Joanna.
And so, that's, that's why I really brought the bill forward, is that at the end of the day, I, I was trying to get clarity and trying to find out, you know, if people should be paying the tax, they should be paying the tax. But when we were talking to the department, and, and Senator and I said, "Give us a white paper, tell us who needs to be paying it, who shouldn't," there was no clarity. So, they said, "Representative, we, we really can't tell you, we would just have to go, we have to audit each company and go business by business." And so, that's the status quo. Right now, businesses do have no idea whether they should be paying this tax or not, until the Department of Revenue knocks on their door. And, and so, that's why I really feel like we need to provide clarity. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Where's that taken?
Mark, please. Thanks.
I just got a letter just today, from one of my fitness centers up there, they owe $40,000 in back taxes. And they don't understand why. So, when I reached out to find out why, I said, "Well, it's entertainment tax." And I'm like, "Those people go there to become healthy, you know, they go there to do something." Now, you know, a dance studio or something, you know, there may be an argument, but then again, those people that are go there to learn, you know, be our young children, it's still exercise, getting our heart rhythm going, and learning some, it's a learning. So, if you, if you happen to have a consultation with an attorney, and that attorney tells you a joke, and you have fun there and it's entertaining, should they pay sales tax for those sort of things?
I'm assuming that's a rhetorical question.
Oh, thank you, really.
Representative Ellinger?
Uh, thank you, to inquire. See, I'll tell a joke, 'cause that's okay.
Am I gonna get no?
It won't be on the table.
I did say no.
Isn't it true that just about every activity that one engages in, in a, in a gym, maybe with the exception of swimming in the winter, you can exercise here in this building? I knew one particular state representative we used to serve with, she knew it was a fourth mile, every five laps, and every night she was out making those laps, so she would walk 10 miles. I use it as exercise, and then I never use the elevator. When I start out here, I can't make it all the way to the, to the six flights, I gotta stop. By the end of the session, I can run up, and my age, no joke. Now, technically, I suppose I could consider all this tax dimension. I didn't really have to look at those things. I think, for example, if I have a medical prescription from a doctor, that says that Mrs. so-and-so, who has recently had back surgery, needs to go through the following physical therapies, and now, when she graduates from that, to here, that in fact she is receiving medical treatment. I understand that. But I also understand that just about all activities that we do, as he's just joked about, could be considered a joke, could be considered entertainment. I think that we live in an age which is really anti-tax. All these laws that passed many years, now, people are concerned, I'm concerned, over the 80 million that we've cut out of the Education Department, and so on, I'm, I'm concerned about finding ways to, for people who can afford to, to pay taxes, to pay them, and not find new ways to get out of them. I don't think these are burdens of taxes, and I do think that the Department of Revenue and the auditor have an ongoing obligation to explain and justify the taxes advanced. And I think that's the way to go. If someone wants to test this, file, you can, there can be a lawsuit. But I don't think you have to run to the legislature to completely eliminate entertainment. I mean, some of these things are so close. I was once on a Board of Directors, who gave money to Stables, to help kids with Sarah Holmes, the Mosaic Foundation, and I didn't believe it. I said, "There can't be any medical benefit then." Well, I learned other ones. That really was a doctor's prescription, it really helps kids. But that was proven to me and shown. So, I, my point is, that we should, we, there's no need to change the law, there's no great crisis here, and if there is, people can bring a lawsuit, and they very well could win. But if we take another 4.5 million or 10 million, where are we gonna make that cut? We have to be realistic about these things. And I always enjoy our conversations, Representative Burleson, thank you.
Thank you.
Representative LaBaker?
Good morning. I'm looking at the fiscal note, and on page 410, Division of Budgetes and Planning says, and I'm just curious what your opinion on what they say here, may, they're saying that your legislation may exclude taxable sales from bowling and billiard establishments and miscellaneous amusements. And I'm wondering if you can help me understand, one, what a miscellaneous amusement is, and why bowling and billiards is in there? Because when I look at your legislation, you use the word arcades, and so I'm wondering if we can define it a little tighter in there?
Yeah, I'm working to define, to tighten the language. And so, I think that, and I'm working with your analyst, actually, to tighten the language. And so, we're, I'll be sure to try and work with Chairman and anyone in the committee that wants to, to try to tighten that language, to make sure. My intent is not to, not to exclude the ones that are, that were, I think, originally intended in the statutes that fall under entertainment, but to stop the expansion into really the kind of fitness centers, the things that, that they've, what happened was, there was a court decision, there was, originally, the department started tax, trying to tax Wilson's Fitness. And Wilson's fought, and they lost. And, and since they lost that case, it has opened up into other areas. And so, that court case is what's allowing them to broadly define, broadly define that word recreation.
And it, I don't know if they provided you with any background or backup information, but this fiscal note says that the taxable sales for bowling and billiard establishments in total $720.5 million. I believe that, that number is more than likely the revenue from all of them.
Yeah, I believe that that is the entire entertainment tax.
Okay. I had no idea the whole billiard industry in our state brought in, that would be remarkable. Okay, that would be a business I would like to start. Yeah, I was looking at that, and I figured you had some thoughts on it, so I thought I'd flesh that out a little bit, I appreciate it, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Representative Grayson?
To inquire, Mr. Chair. Without this clarity, that YMCA houses of worship at some point be considered a part of this entertainment tax?
I'm not sure about how, they may begin taxing if you're, if you charge people to come and hear music, I don't, I don't know. But I, certainly YMCA, if I were YMCA, I would be concerned.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody test five in favor of House Bill 1179?
Mr. Chairman, Representative Committee, Ray McCarty, President of Associated Industries in Missouri, we want to be on record and support this legislation again this year. The, the problem has been around for a really long time, and it has been the result of court decisions that seem to go one way and then seem to go another. There's never been good clarity of this language for the Department of Revenue, and as the representative found out, when you go and try to ask the question of what is taxable, what isn't, you get varying answers. And taxpayers out there that are trying to run their businesses are also getting whipsawed by this, because if they don't collect the tax, and auditor shows up and says they should have collected the tax, and they have to pay three years' worth of back taxes they didn't collect. The question you asked Representative about the churches, who knows? I mean, they have an exemption letter, but the exemption letter only covers them for things that are within their charitable function. So, what if they decide that maybe the basketball games are not related to their charitable function, their religious function? They decide to charge sales tax on the amount that you pay to, to go participate in a league, maybe, that you have set up in your church? No one knows. And that's why we think that the legislature should bring some clarity to it. We believe, like Representative, the original intent was tickets of admission, that was really what this was about. And there were several little words, fees paid in or to a place of amusement, and that in or to is what's caused all the problems. Because we've had, we've had taxpayers that have been held taxable for things that otherwise would not be taxable, things like bowling shoes, that they paid tax on when they bought them. But because they charge a rental fee on the bowling shoes, now they have to charge sales tax on it because of those little words that are here. So, it's resulted in double taxation. Things like this have been going on for a long time, golf carts, I mean, there's a long line of cases. We kept a lot of lawyers busy, but we haven't really got any clarity for taxpayers, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. So, you know, anybody else test five in favor of House Bill 1179?
Thanks for having me tonight. I was here last year, I was one of those lucky business owners that got a visit from the Department of Revenue and found out that I was gonna owe a little back taxes. My thing is that it's just not fair, kind of across the board. Okay, my name, sorry. My name's Noah Aldrich, I own a business called Big Time Results in Springfield, Missouri. I'm a registered dietitian, certified personal trainer. I have, we do obviously personal training, but one of our big core components of our business is corporate wellness, where we go into businesses, do cholesterol screening, smoking cessation, group exercises at the work site. And that's where it kind of gets kind, I would say, not so clear. Right now, I just went on the website for the Department of Revenue on the way up here, and it says, "Fitness centers and group exercise classes that are at a, like a fitness center have to charge sales tax, but places like, that have swimming lessons, tennis lessons, rock climbing instruction, karate instruction, dance instruction, massage, hair salon services are not subject to sales tax." They will consider those entertainment, why they do consider the personal training and group exercise entertainment. And I talked to Eric and asked him, and I know my, I don't know if you guys would wanna pump out 10 pushups for me, 10 squats, and tell me how much, how amused you are from that? You guys, you wanna do that? But, but too, too many people are amused by that. I know, when I talked to the Department of Revenue with Representative Burleson and Senator Dixon, I invited them down, let, let me entertain them for a few days, and they didn't, they didn't think that was too much fun, so they denied that. But currently, like hospital centers, YMCA's, the services that we provide at businesses, the corporate wellness, where we're doing, you know, several different modalities of exercise, and in-home training services that we do, and then with medical diagnoses that a client receives from a physician, we don't have to charge sales tax. So, it's just really muddy. We have to charge sales tax only with personal trained clients, when they come to, you know, our studio, and they don't have a medical diagnosis, or if we're not a hospital, or YMCA, the Meyer Center, which is owned by Cox in Springfield, Missouri. They bought this and won, but they have, you know, obviously, you know, a lot of in-house attorneys that can, can fight this and make it not cost-effective for the state, where, you know, a small business like myself could not fight something like that. So, the state's just kind of backed down, and they, they settled with them, you know, with the Cox. So, you know, I'm just asking for an even playing field. Right now, you know, we're spending over 75 cents a dollar, or 75 cents a rub dollar on healthcare to treat, or we're spending less than 5% to prevent. And, you know, one of the biggest things is that, you know, most chronic diseases, they're saying can be preventative with lifestyle prevention, eating less, exercising more, and we're not really, you know, doing that. I, I think that this should be something that's kind of like health savings accounts, where it can be something where it's pre-taxed even. But, you know, right now, we're kind of trending the other way. OBC rates have increased 30%, you know, diabetes, hypertension, high cholesterol, that stuff's, you know, growing significantly, so that's kind of my take on it.
Any questions?
Representative?
May I inquire a big comment? Well, you, you admitted, we know each other, so I had to call you out.
Yeah, no problem.
Just maybe, this isn't our topic, so if you'll bear with me. Are you concealed, Carrie?
No, I'm not.
Well, come on.
I did go shooting yesterday.
Ever since I've known you, you've talked about guns. And I think you're concealing them.
Weapons of mass destruction, right there?
Yeah. This is a no joke.
Okay.
But you are entertaining.
Yeah, me personally, but not when I, when you're.
But I agree with you, I don't, I don't think that what you're doing is, is classified as entertainment, because it's a, it's a necessary service that you're providing. And there are far more people than we realize who should do something, but don't take the opportunity. And unfortunately, as we even educate our, our children, we don't take the time to really show them what they can do for lifelong fitness. And I think you're providing that. In fact, you go beyond just the physical, and you do the nutritional as well. And so, I, thank you for all that. And also to, just to comment on Representative Ellinger's comment, with regard to prescriptions, I think this is one area that we use to write our own prescription, and, and seek out help like Mr. Aldrich and other centers who do things that are, that are good for health. And if you, if you tax something like this, which is not really an entertainment at all, I, I was in the business for 27 years, and we were competitors, friendly competitors. And this is something that vast, a vast majority of people need it, but not taking advantage of it. So, if we increase the cost, we may put folks like Mr. Aldrich out of business and discourage people from taking advantage of it.
Thank you, Chairman.
There's also been all kinds of studies recorded, like obese individuals, how much more they cost the state, especially the uninsured obese individuals, they cost the state roughly $1,500 more a year than not obese people, so it just kind of deals.
Please make sure you fill out witness form. Anybody else test five in favor of House Bill 1179?
I am a gym owner for a gymnastics facility in Bliss Springs, Missouri. My name is Sherry Dillon. I, I think the biggest confusion here is, those of us, I, my business was audited several years ago, this was never mentioned to us as something that we were supposed to be doing. So, we have not charged a sales tax, didn't know there was even a possibility we were supposed to. One of my dear friends at a local gym near us did get audited this last year and does have to pay a large amount. The problem is, when my accountant called earlier down here at Jeff City and asked if this was something we were supposed to do, even the people within your own place couldn't give us an answer. They don't even know the answer to that question. Many of the gym owners have no clue that they are supposed to be collecting any kind of a sales tax. And then, it's easy to say, if you disagree with this, and you get audited, and you have to pay this amount of money, we'll just hire a lawyer. My problem is, my business, I only have about 135 kids in my gym, we only bring in about $10,000 a month, my rent is $6,000 by the time I pay my staff. Basically, we are all there because we love kids and we have a passion for what we're doing. I don't have $5 to give to something that I did not collect, because I didn't know I was supposed to. I don't have the money to hire a lawyer to fight that. If we know upfront that this is something we are supposed to collect, and it is clear cut that we are supposed to collect it, we don't have a problem with that. But there is no clear definition of who is and who is not supposed to be collecting this tax. I, I have children of my own who are now grown, and I have no problem paying my fair share of taxes. But I need to know that that is something I'm supposed to do, and not be penalized for something three years ago, and through this whole last several years, for something I didn't know, and yet I have worked very hard as a business owner to find out what I'm supposed to collect, what I'm supposed to turn in, and what is appropriate. And I think that's a big part of this frustration from business owners. We just don't know what we're supposed to be doing, and even when we call down here to find out, we're not getting clear answers. So, just, just, you know, we're, we're just a small place out there, but there are a lot of us. I also don't feel like this is a, a revenue that you're, you're going to lose by doing this, because the majority of us aren't charging it because we don't know we're supposed to. So, you're not really losing anything, because people don't know about it in the first place. I, I understand that we all need to do our fair share for our state. But please give us some real set guidelines, so we know what is appropriate. Thank you. Any questions?
All right, anybody else test five in favor of House Bill 1179?
My name's Carl Fudge, my wife and I own Flitch Gymnastics in Columbia, Missouri. We're a small business, just as the other testified, testifying person was, and yeah, we right now, we, we understand that we have birthday parties in our gym, and that is entertainment, and we charge sales tax on that. We've always been told that gymnastics instruction is not entertainment, it's instruction. And that's why we have not paid this tax. If we get audited, and we have to go back and pay a $70,000 or $80,000 bill, we'll just have to shut the door, as simple as that. That's all there is to it. And, or about 130, between 120, 730 gyms, with the exception of some very, very large gyms in Kansas City and St. Louis, heavy municipality, under 250,000, that has 100 kids in a program, or 200 kids in a program, or 300, they're all going under. They can't survive this, because they can't pay those back taxes. I saw Mr., I think it was Ellinger, talking about, "Well, you need to have doctor's prescription." Well, is that what we're waiting for? We're actually teaching these kids at a very young age how to be healthy, how to eat healthy, how to exercise, how to be responsible. Talk to the teachers in schools, and they'll tell you that the kids that are in gymnastics, they're the kids that go to class, they're the kids that are organized, they're the kids that turn in, their homework on time. They're not, they're the kids that are involved in school, because they understand that, and they learned it in gymnastics. It's something that teaches kids what we're doing. And the other thing I want to talk about is subsidies. We subsidize everything to make people healthy. Well, these gymnastics clubs, we're doing it without a subsidy. All we're asking is, don't hinder us, and then don't give us these fuzzy rules that we don't even know if we're abiding by them or not, and then when we call you, what are the rules you can't tell us? That's my problem with the whole thing. Thanks.
Anybody else test five in favor of House Bill 1179?
Hello, my name is Eric Burkett, and like the two that preceded me, I am a gymnastics gym owner here in Jefferson City. And we just found out about, about this bill last night, and what's going on to some of the gyms in the gymnastics community in the state of Missouri. And I'll be very brief, but we instruct approximately 400 kids from two and a half years old all the way to 17 years old, and I think we make a huge difference in these kids' lives. Carl mentioned about how well our kids that are in gymnastics do in school. 95% of the kids on our gymnastics team have a 4.0 in school, and that's one of our, our selling points for our kids to, to be part of our program. If I were audited and faced with a, a tax bill from three years ago, I am a very small business, I would, I would certainly have to close my doors as well. So, just want to be brief and say that we, we support this, and we need to clarify the fuzziness that, that is currently existing.
Thank you. Does that have anything?
Good morning.
Please.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Representative, my question could be for you. Do, do we have anything in this that would be retroactive, that those that didn't know would be held harmless?
I, I'm open to that discussion. If we do go retroactive, that would, it would probably increase the fiscal note. I, I will tell you, I've been extremely frustrated with working with, with the department getting a clear fiscal note. And so, because they do, they throw in entities that were clearly trying to say this, so for example, sporting events, I'm not, you know, I'm truly, I'm trying to make, make it clear, but yet, every time they put in a fiscal note, they're throwing in everything that would be in the kitchen sink in this bill. So, I'm, I think that would increase the fiscal note, and I.
And sir, that, as far, as far as that fiscal note goes, this loss of revenue to the state, it's revenue that we weren't getting anyway. It's, it's immaterial of what we're going to lose by not having this. The simple fact of the matter is, is that our responsibility, or should it not be our responsibility, or that department's responsibility, to notify businesses such as these folks that are here today, that this new law went into effect, and you are now going to be required from this point forward to collect sales tax. And, and if you do not, then, then that's on you. But if, is it their responsibility to research this, all of that? My constituency- My constituent's letter to me was, "I rely on my CPA."
Yeah, most CPAs do not know.
Not know this. And when he went there, my, he conveyed to me that, he says, "It's your responsibility to know this, and my responsibility to pay. Now, if you didn't know, should I pay? Or should you pay?" So we're going to get into a lot of different, different, uh, my, my point being is, is that should we or should we not look at something that says, "Look, the intent of the law when it was written is that this, this would be the people that we're going to tax. We don't, we did not intend for our gymnastics, dance studios, workout centers to be taxed. Therefore, we're going to retrofit this and not charge those that haven't been charged, or maybe repay those that did."
I think, I'm open to that discussion. I think it's, it's worth, worth examining.
All right, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please make sure anybody that came to testify filled out witness forms.
Good evening. Chuck Pierce, CPA member of the Missouri Society of CPAs. We just want to go on record in support of clarifying this. You've heard plenty of testimony. This is extremely confusing, and it's really because when it does get challenged, what has happened is the courts have looked at this, and they basically said, "If it's fun, it's probably recreation, and if there's a fee associated with that, we need to be collecting the tax on that." So something goes up, new law gets, gets written by the courts, it gets handed back down. And the other thing is, relative to sales tax, the average business does that to sales. I mean, a lot of that sales tax return is done by the person internally, and there is no way for them to keep up with all the cases and the, and the letter rulings and everything that comes out. This is a very murky area, and whether the list is, is right and other representatives working on what goes in that list and what doesn't, clarity needs to, to be brought to this at some point.
Representative Engler.
A question for either one. What about sports leagues? When you join a soccer league and you pay your fee, are, are you supposed to be charged tax on that because it's entertainment? Or baseball, Little League baseball? Are we charging tax on participate Little League baseball or soccer programs?
You know, I, I can't.
Is there somebody you're going to answer that?
I think the department could speak to that, Representative, but, but that's a very unclear area. I think, I think recreational baseball leagues, where it is not a 501(c)(3) and is not, and is a fee to belong to that league, has much of the characteristics of gymnastics. And therefore, that would go up. I think you could find Little League.
Six, I was at the Civic Center Saturday morning, there's 500 kids participating in indoor soccer in the, in the gyms. Are they all supposed to be paying sales tax on that because they're not?
And part of that would depend on the organization that puts it together, and, and then what happens is, this, this is being, this is coming to bear as a result of audit, and that's the testimony we've heard.
What about all the church now? The Baptist church that has the Baptist, has the basketball leagues that you pay a fee to? Are they going to get charged, or because they're a nonprofit, do they not get charged sales tax?
Well, you know, I, I think it.
For their entertainment?
It would fall to the extent to which that's integral to their mission is, a 501(c)(3).
Well, I'll be enlightened here in a few minutes. Thank you.
All right. Also, I've, I've been asked to turn in comments from the gymnastics owner in Blue Springs, who a previous witness referred to. He was actually at the Senate hearing and had my card and sent me this today and asked me if I would turn that in, in support of the bill.
All right. Anybody else testify in favor of House Bill 1179? Anybody testify against House Bill 1179? Anybody testify for informational purposes only?
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is Paul Harper. I'm the legislative director at the Department of Revenue, and hopefully I'll be able to answer most of your questions. I'm really here to talk about the history of this, and I agree with much of what has been said, cases going back to the 1970s. The court has struggled with the distinction between amusement, entertainment, and recreation, and oftentimes has not distinguished between those terms. As early as the 90s, they've said that fitness is other things, but it's also recreation. Really, the, the change in law that, that we're really talking about is the result of Michael Jottis Fitness, is the 2008 case. And in that case, the Supreme Court said that it draws no distinction between whether a person exercises pursuant to a plan of his or her own devising, or under the immediate and direct supervi, supervision of a fitness trainer. Rather, the statute states that taxes for fees paid to a place of amusement, entertainment, or recreation for taxable services offered at retail. And that's, like I said, that's a long line of cases that have taxed fitness, but what was expanded in 2008 was really that personal training aspect and the education aspect of the personal training. The department has had in the last, in the last, since that time, it has issued at least seven or eight letter rulings to this effect, and, and has done some outreach to some of the constituent groups. I'm not sure if we've hit everybody, but certainly have done some outreach. I'm not going to say we've hit every business as far as letters to them saying anything because that just wouldn't be true. We have tried to do it where we know that there are deficiencies. For example, in 2009, we send letters out to yoga studios, we've sent targeted letters out to different areas where we know that there are problems. But yes, there is a lot of confusion in this area, and I concur with what the representative says, that there is confusion, especially on the part of groups who are trying to follow this law. So I'm willing to entertain any, any questions you have.
I'd be curious if, but what about the leagues?
Actually, he, he said it exactly right. It all depends on how the league is set up, if it's set up as a, if it's set up, this is a, this is also, it's fees paid to a place of amusement. So a league may not necessarily be a place of amusement, but the location where you, where you have the games, the admission fee then would, would charge the tax.
All right. I owned a roller rink at, at one time, or at least my wife is. It's way past the statute of limitations. So was there supposed to be sales tax or a right to roller skaters?
Yes, roller rinks are considered a place of amusement.
Okay, so if they played hockey in those, and they pay a fee to be in the league?
If the fee is going to the place of amusement, entertainment, or recreation, yes. If it's going to a 501(c)(3) that's not actually associated with running the rink, then, then no. It's because the tax is actually to a place of amusement, entertainment, and recreation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that they established that we need to clarify.
Yeah.
Representative Pigden.
Joe Quarr, sir. Thank you. Sir, it, it's not our position in, in, in this body, both chambers, to put people out of business. Our, our whole intent is to encourage growth. Those folks, unfortunately, that did not know, nor was notified officially that they needed to start collecting this, that are hit with 40, 60, $80,000 back tax debts, will eventually close their doors and be, and be no good to us at all. Is there a mechanism in place that you, that, that your department forgives or can forgive back taxes to start immediately if this, if, if this doesn't, once they're notified officially that they must start, that they're not hit with a big deficit to close the door?
Well, I, I can tell you that, that we do approximately 1,900 audits a year. About 10 of them are in this area. So, so we have been hitting people with audits that are, are fitness centers or some of these other businesses we've been talking about. Would the department hold them for the taxes at least as to 2009? Yes, it does. However, there is a mechanism for the taxpayer, if, if it does, if it would put them out of business, there's a process called an offer and compromise, that the department is actually permitted by law to reduce the tax burden on somebody where there are issues as to collectability, if it would put them out of business. And there's, there's a specifically enumerated number of things that the department can reduce the tax burden for those reasons. And I know for a fact that there are several of the businesses that were hit with audits under this circumstance, where we did do an offer and compromise and did lower their tax burden after the audit occurred and after they were assessed, because it was a burden on, on their business, and we did negotiate with them through the offer and compromise process.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anybody else testify for informational purposes? Thank you.